Okay, can I just have the man has attention a little bit for a minute? Can you all hear me? It's getting loud here. Is that loud today? Okay, a couple of things. I'm going to be moderating. We're going to start reading the questions. The way we do it is, you know, we'll do the opening comments first. We're already done here and we do it alphabetically by district. So we'll do one, two, and six. A couple of things. I'm going to be here and I'm going to kind of hold it back. But your audience is out there. So you want to make sure that you're addressing the audience. And that will be at the beginning. That's one thing. The timer is Leslie and she's going to be sitting right here. So you've got one minute for your opening statement, one minute for questions, and one minute for closing. When the timer shows that you've spent 14 seconds, this sign will come up. So try to keep an eye on Leslie over here. And she'll be like waving it around a little bit. Make sure you keep your eye. And when you get to one minute, when you get to the one minute, the sign will come up. Please don't just stop talking. Please don't start with any thought. You want to make sure if your sentence is finished and if you just start talking when the sign comes up, we may not understand your point. So stay at your seat. We're going in a minute with DeMar between opening comments for everybody. And then I come up and do the moderation. Does anybody have any questions? It's better to sit because when people stand up, if the sound doesn't come out too well during our recordings. And we actually, last time we had, I think it was like 10,000 people online. So the audience is still here, but the audience out there is quite lively. And we are taking questions. To notice, you took the question from, I think, watching last time. And we got some questions online, which is wonderful.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. We go get started here. That way we have enough time to get all the questions answered that we can this evening. All right, before we begin tonight, my name is DeMar Bias. And this is the candidate form for Pontiac City Council Districts 1, 2, and 6. These positions are to elect someone to represent your district, voting for no more than one person in each district for a four-year term. The sponsors of this forum tonight are the League of Women Voters Oakland Area, Change Up Midnight Coalition, Jews for a Secular Democracy, Michigan League of Conservation Voters Education Fund, Michigan Roundtable for Just Communities, Oakland Forward, Voters Not Politicians, Voting Access for All Coalition, and When You Vote, I Win. The nonpartisan sponsors of this event do not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates only. We, the sponsors, take no responsibility. And if you're interested in learning more about working, the work of presenting organizations or how you can get involved with strengthening our democracy, I encourage you to visit the resource table as you came in on the right. A few house rules. Please silence all cell phones. Refrain from personal recordings or photographs during the forum. The event is copyrighted by the League of Women Voters. And a recording of the forum will be available on the presenting organization's website within a week. For clarity and sound recording, we ask that all candidates remain seated. We ask the audience hold all applause until the end of the forum. And also, if you can return that survey that you were given, that gives them opportunity to learn what may need to be done differently or better in the future. So tonight, we will hear from six of the eight candidates from Districts 1, 2, and 6. Vying for seats in District 1, we have Chris Jackson and Melanie Rutherford. District 2, we have Dean Bavacqua. Did I say that right? And Melana Jones. District 6, we have Regina Campbell and Troy Craft. The Pontiac City Council is the legislative branch of the Pontiac City Government. There are seven members of the Pontiac City Council. Members of the city council are directly elected by the voters and serve four-year terms. City Council and ordinances investigate issues within the city, approve appointments made by the mayor, controls the city payroll, and adopts annual budget and appropriation ordinance. It also addresses citizens' concerns and complaints within their district. With recent changes in the city charter, the new council consists of six districts and one council-at-large representative. Districts have been realigned. And if you're concerned about your current district and/or polling locations, you can reach out to the city's clerk's office. City Council has adopted a Pontiac City Council Code of Ethics. Each council member has pledged to take their roles and responsibilities in serving the city of Pontiac and its residents very seriously. Each council member also seeks to ensure that the governmental decisions are made in the public's best interest and aims to prevent city council members from making government decisions that will impact their personal and/or financial interests. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine to begin our question process.
Good evening, everyone. The format for this forum is as follows. All candidates are given one minute for opening statements in alphabetical order. Candidates have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse order. And tonight, because we have three districts represented, they're in alphabetical order by district, 1, 2, and 6. Please watch for the timer stop sign to know when your minute is up. As we begin the forum, I'd like to remind our audience and candidates to please turn off your cell phones. We begin with opening statements from our candidates. Mr. Jackson, you have one minute.
One, okay. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Jackson and I am a candidate for District 1 City Council. First of all, thank you to all of the organizers for this event and giving us a platform. There's a theme that continues to play in my head. There is a plan for our community. The question is, is our community going to be a part of that plan? So, yes, skills, education, experiences, that matters. Whether or not you have a good heart, a good intention, that also matters. But there's three overarching themes that I hope you would pay attention tonight. Does our leadership have accountability? Does our leadership have transparency? Is our leadership disciplined? And it's up to you all, the voters, in this case in District 1, to tell us whether or not you believe that my opponent or I are what's best for District 1. And I look forward to having that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Four years ago, I was given a plan. And the plan was to whom much is given, much is required. The roads needed to be repaired, I did that. The budget needed to be balanced, I did that. They needed more CBG funds brought in-house, I did that. Every answer that has ever been, every question that has ever been given to me, I answered. Even if it was the hard question. At the end of the day, you do need to have discipline. You do need to have transparency. You do need to have honesty. But you also need to get the job done. And I always tell people, look at my budget. Look at my record. We have $300 million that we brought surplus in actual income into the city of Pontiac in four years. Every road that you guys asked to be repaired, repaired, was repaired. Parks have been built. New jobs, new opportunities, new housing, over 100 homes have been built. At the end of the day, you don't want nobody who says what they're going to do. You want somebody that has delivered. Rutherford gets results because I stand 10 toes down every day for the people, the small people, the big people. Because everybody has a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua.
Hi, I'm Dean Bavacqua and I'm running for District 2 City Council. I'm Dean Bavacqua and I'm running for District 2 City Council. I want to give you a little bit about my background. I currently serve on the Pontiac Housing Commission. And I'm chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm also on the Huron Main Street Board. And my prior life, I was Rochester City Councilperson and mayor pro tem there and served on the Housing Commission. So I'd like to bring a lot of this experience and my background and my business experience, which is 30 years in media buying and planning in the field of advertising, to work for you and serve as your councilperson to try to bring all of that to be a benefit to this community. And I do that as a sense of service. And it's a passion that I have for being involved in municipal governance and serving my community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, my name is Melana Jones. And I'm proudly serving Pontiac's West Side, representing District 2. I am running because I am passionate about uplifting others and leading with purpose and empathy. My background includes an MBA in organizational leadership, where I advanced my critical thinking strategies and was able to analyze data more efficiently and manage resources, limited resources at that. And those skills are also essential for creating and managing legislative policies that are going to be sustainable in our community. My platform is called United with Jones. And it earned its name because I am well-prepared to represent a community as diverse as our own. And most of that comes from my experience in diversity, equity, and inclusion. So my goal is to bridge the gap between people and policies. And we have already started that work in District 2. And I look forward to giving you more information about that as we continue in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Regina Campbell. And I am candidate for District 6, the new District 6. I am a mother. I am a grandmother. I am a business owner. I have done advocacy work. Just to give a little background, I was a vice chair for the NAACP, the Oakland County Chair for the Political Action Committee. I serve as the Historical District Commission Vice Chair. In leadership, I believe you have to have commitment, resources, and intelligence. And so with my background, I have the resources, commitment, and intelligence. My platform is basic things that our community needs, which is housing, safety, economic development, sustainability. And that's what I'm standing for today.
Thank you. Mr. Craft.
Hi, I'm Troy Craft. Lifelong resident of Pontiac, East Side, Patlock and Wilson. I'm running for, as a write-in, for District 6. And I've been a strong advocate for the youth here in Pontiac and the people, just the common people here in Pontiac. I have concerns about the way the government has been run here and the inclusion of other different companies coming in here, taking over, doing stuff. And we need to be incentivizing our, I'm looking to incentivize our neighborhoods and stuff and make sure we have quality programming for our youth and our seniors.
Thank you. Now we'll begin the question and answer segment of the forum. Answers have one-minute time limit. We'll begin with Ms. Rutherford. And this one has, some of it is partly just District 1, but some of it's generic. How are you prioritizing residents' quality of life in your policies and votes? For example, the noise pollution and need for a grocery store over dispensary? And that includes the issue of the noise level that was increased when the M1 went in. So if you could talk a little bit about that.
Yes. So sometimes when you are in leadership, you have to make tough decisions. But I always try to put my district first. So first, I want to talk about the noise ordinance. I inherited this problem when I got on City Council. And we had to come up with a plan that I felt that was best for the citizens. Now, I admit that maybe I should have taken a deeper step or a deeper dive in telling my citizens how it would affect them. But at the end of the day, my job is to try to do three things. Make them change the time, which I did. Make them change the timeline on streets, which I did. Make them more accountable to the community, which I did. Making sure that we have a more bite in our sound ordinance. So I stand behind listening to the concerns of the people. But I also understand that sometimes we don't always get it right. And we have to take ownership when we don't. My job is to continue to learn from a mistake or a misunderstanding so that I can actually keep bringing people involved. At the end of the day, I work for the people. I serve the people because I am the people's charities. That's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua. You're next.
The same question?
Same question. Everybody gets the same questions.
Regarding the...
This is the, I can repeat.
Yeah, please repeat the question.
And you can always ask me to repeat a question because there's six of you. So, how are you prioritizing residents' quality of life in your policies and votes? For example, noise pollution, the need for a grocery store versus dispensary? And what could you do to repair the streets? So it's a quality of life issue. Question.
Okay. I guess I'll start with grocery store. I think that our economic development team should be putting together a full press marketing package that talks about all of the wonderful things that are happening here in Pontiac in terms of development and sell to the, some of the regional and national grocery chains the concept of you want to be on board in this community and you want to be on board now because things are moving forward and your competitor is going to get in here first and you're going to miss out. I think that we need to push that. As far as the sound ordinance, I don't know if I want to play Monday morning quarterback on that. But I would just say that I know that the way that we were handling, and the ordinance was handling, the sound issue was not working. We were spending more money on legal fees than we were on getting any fines from them. So it was ineffective. Something had to be done. And I think I'm pretty much out of time, so.
Thank you. Ms. Jones. I don't think I need to repeat it. Actually, could you repeat the question? Yeah, sure. How are you prioritizing residents' quality of life in your policies and votes? For example, noise pollution, the need for a grocery store over dispensaries? And what are you doing to repair streets?
So we'll start with the M1 vote regarding noise and quality of life for residents. There are two answers to that. One answer is the quality of life that you experience, that you hear every day, that goes on at the concourse. And the other quality of life is what's in your pocket. And the reality of the situation is that vote for that noise ordinance came, I voted the way that I did because I was being considerate of residents' money. Now, there have been conversations that we've had regarding additional things that can be done for the sound barrier, things that will be implemented as tickets are enforced and et cetera. A special fund that is developed based on what is ticketed. And that fund would go towards, it's similar to what another resident was pitching. What we need to really do is start talking about the things that we are doing. And that goes for the grocery store versus dispensary. The downtown development does have a market included in their site plan. We have to start talking about that. And yes, it's just one grocery store, but that is a start. And that is more than what we have right now. So we need to share this information with everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell.
I'm going to start off with the question about the decimal M1 concourse. Although it's not in my district, I just believe that the power belongs with the people. And how the people came out to stand on their principles of the noise ordinance, whether it was one or two or multiple people, that is how we get things done. So I'm not for sure what happened in the district or how many people came out. But together, we are stronger. As it relates to the grocery stores, I believe that we have several stores on the corners now. That we need quality food. We need food that is priced competitively. And so I believe that the quality of life with the grocery stores and the public and us telling the legislative body, listening to what the people say or vote for is what we need to follow.
Thank you. Mr. Craft.
Okay. Let me start with the dispensary stuff. I thought, back in 2017, I thought it was a bad idea for our city to implement medical marijuana. And I think we were one of the first in Oakland County to adopt this. And now we're the last one to take advantage of it. And those were the things that all of the income, our people, our citizens, are taking this money and that income and going to other areas and stuff when we could have used that money and subsidized the roads before Jennifer Granholm. I believe I mentioned, not Jennifer Granholm, I'm sorry. I apologize, but our governor. And this was one of the things that I spoke at at the Harrington Hills meeting back in April. And I thought we should be able to subsidize our roads in that way. And we should have took advantage of it and helped with the youth programs and the anti-violence for the teenagers.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Bavacqua.
And this is... Can I answer that one, please? No, that's all good.
Sorry. Didn't go to the top.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
So I've been very consistent in my messaging related to M1. They need to be better community partners. They need to make sure that they're doing what they promised to do and they need to follow the rules, period. The only issue that I have, or the biggest issue that I have, and I understand that leaders have to make difficult decisions sometimes. They may have to do things that are unpopular. But it doesn't mean that you do it in secrecy. I don't understand why, if it were me, there wasn't transparency in the process for talking to the people about the new operating agreement. Period. We have been played for generations with leaders that do things without asking our citizens first. And it begs the question, and it's the reason why we can't trust government in the first place. Because what else are you hiding? What aren't you going to tell us in the future? And so we need transparency in our leadership, going back to what I discussed in the very beginning. And that started with this operating agreement in M1. With M1. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll start the next question with Mr. Bavacqua. And Leslie, we're going to do this to a minute and a half. And Leslie, we're going to do this to a minute and a half, because it's two questions from the audience all around housing. So I'm going to read them both, but they're related. In support of your constituents, how do you plan to address complaints regarding unsafe and unfair housing if elected? And what is your plan to support HUD housing? So everyone will have 90 seconds, a minute and a half.
So in regards to unsafe housing, it's part of my platform that I think we need to hold landlords and property owners accountable. Part of that is removing blight, but it's also putting our ordinance officers onto some of these landlords that are essentially slum lords, that do not have their properties up to code, and are having people live in squalid conditions. No one should have to do that. And as a city, we should be pressing these landlords to invest the money that they need to into the properties, so that people have safe housing and decent living conditions. The ways that we need to do that, or if it's a matter of investing in more money in the ordinance department than, or in the ordinance officer department, then we need to do that. I think that my work on the Housing Commission, supporting the Hundred Homes Project to try to increase the volume of housing that we have in this community by taking vacant lots and filling them in with new homes, and having public-private partnerships that allow us to have banks that will help support people to move them from renter to homeownership, even if they're in the Section 8 housing program, is something that we should be focused on.
Thank you very much. Next one is Ms. Jones.
So in regards to unsafe housing, I just want to say that first, that is a problem that can often affect homeowners and renters. We often look at this as a problem that only renters experience, but there are many cases across our city where homeowners are struggling to maintain their home, and they're struggling to keep up with the rising costs of these repairs that need to be done, especially with the aging infrastructure and aesthetics of homes in our city. So as far as supporting that, you know, we really need to start looking at solutions. My solution is not to ramp up code enforcement and give these people a hard time. My solution is to look for organizations and entities that can help, that we can bring to our city and help people stay in their houses, because that's what I've been passionate about doing and have been doing in different settings across District Two, in different communities. There have been people who have been at risk of losing their home, and in tears right before me, and I've done everything that I could to get them help, and guess what? They are still in their home, and they're still making repairs. And we keep the circle rolling, because we all need to be supporting each other and uplifting each other like the community that we are. For supporting HUD housing, to answer the second part of that question, you know, that's going to be semi-addressed in the Community Benefits Ordinance that we are currently establishing, which I co-led with Pro Tem Councilman Carrington. Affordable housing is one of the benefits that is outlined in that ordinance if a developer requests for some type of tax incentive, and they're building some kind of housing development, creating opportunities. I know residents say they want housing of all kinds, they don't want the city overloaded with affordable housing, but the reality is, we have a need here, and we need to support that need.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. It's a double one. In support of your constituents, how do you plan to address complaints regarding unsafe and unfair housing if elected? And what is your plan to support HUD housing?
To support unsafe housing, I would start off with investigating who is managing, why, what is the problem, and how does it come about? Because a lot of times we have tenants that are in unsafe housing, and we don't know how, what happened, how did it get there? So I believe that we first need to investigate. Number two, I know that if there is some unfair housing, there is some ordinance that are in place for the tenants, for their rights, making sure that the tenants understand their rights as a tenant. And who, what resources do they have available to report when they're being violated? As far as HUD homes, the same thing applies. If there is some issues with subsidized housing through HUD, there's a chain of command. And the tenant and the recipients need to understand, how then do they address it, and the protocols, and to get to the right people. The issue that we're having is that we've got the protocols, we've got people that are in places, but the tenants don't know how to connect with the person that can assist them and get results. So it's a reporting issue. And once we figure out, and that will be one of the roles that I will, that I plan to work on as a city council member, is to target those areas where those tenants are having issues, and they just can't get the right answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Yes, I would attack it by, like, I would attack it by having a relationship with the ordinance, the inspectors, and making sure, holding them accountable for their jobs, making sure that they're out there investigating these properties, making sure that the people have the adequate stuff that they need, you know, out there in. We have a lot of, my main concern is a lot of, we have a lot of empty lots, and one of the concerns is that we're putting businesses there when we should have affordable housing. And it's a lot of empty lots, especially if you go down Patlock Street. And I think that the quality of life will be enhanced if we happen to, if we put more focus into the properties and stuff here in Pontiac.
Thank you. And we have had Kalima Howard join us, so Ms. Howard, you're next for this question? And, sorry, you have to share mics. Just slide the mic down. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, I would assess, talk with the person and understand that for every action, there's a cause. Find out what's the cause. And then find out what the resources that are available for us to help the people in that situation. And for affordable housing, what was the question for affordable housing? I'm sorry.
Well, how would you address complaints regarding unsafe and unfair housing, and what's your plan to support HUD housing?
First, in fact, I would have to be, have to get more educated on HUD housing. I know of it, but I don't know all the rules and regulations for me to be able to voice it to the people. But first, it's the same thing. I would still have to assess the situation before we take it any farther and find out what's the reason and the cause of the effect of the situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I believe unsafe housing generally comes from a lack of resources to be able to take care of your home. I am a strong proponent, and I do support expanding the senior home repair program so that our seniors have an opportunity to age in place. Most of them can't afford either the taxes or the upkeep on their homes. And so the more that we can do to invest in that, and the ARPA dollars did its job the first time around, and we have to find more funding for that. There is a large concentration of empty lots in and throughout District One. And so when we talk about HUD housing, I also want to bring up the large amount of renters that we have in our community. And helping people become homeowners instead of renters has to be a priority for us. So whether it's HUD housing, whether it's in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, we need to take our corporate partners, like UWMs of the world, that deal in this space anyway, and work with them to figure out what it means to help people bridge the gap from being homeowners, well, I'm sorry, from being renters to becoming homeowners. Shout out to the individuals like Jermaine Branners that are, through their workforce development program, working to build houses in and throughout our community. We need to make sure that we're putting resources in those folks' hands and continue to support those people. But I think we need to identify heavily on renters need to become homeowners, because it's a major issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
Can you re-ask that question so I can get it right?
Yep, sure can. In support of your constituents, how do you plan to address complaints regarding unsafe and unfair housing if elected? And what is your plan to support HUD housing?
Well, first of all, I have been, I was a renter for 22 years, and I bought my house through a HUD program called FSS, that's the Family Subsufficiency Program. It's part of the reason why I'm the vice president of the Housing Commission. It's part of the reason why I write ordinance to make sure we hold landlords accountable. It's part of the reason why we have the escrow program, so that renters have the power in their hand. It's part of the reason why we keep showing them about homeownership. And how we do that is, just last week, we put it into place for them to have the first-time homebuyer program in the city of Pontiac. But it gets a little deeper. We have already put millions of dollars to helping people become homeowners. Why? Because we bought the Hundred Home Project that's in District One. Take a ride on Wilson, if you will. Go on Motor Street and see what we're doing. We're actually already doing the work. Now, how we hold land, excuse me, how we hold landowners accountable is that we meet them where they are. We say, this is the assessment, and you have a 30- to 90-day window to repair it. And then if there's funding, both public and private, we give them the opportunity to repair it. And yes, it is true, we have many people, like Jermaine Branner, who's building those homes, but we also have outside communities who want to come volunteer. Faith of America is one of them. We have to continue to help people set a date, have homeownership, have equity, and have the choice to be able to live free and clear in the city of Pontiac. I've done that, I've done the work, I continue to do the work, and every day when someone calls to say, I have a problem with my home, I'm the first person to answer. At the end of the day, it's about getting the results. It's not about saying what we should do, it's about what I'm already doing.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Ms. Jones. And this question is, what have you contributed to your district or Pontiac, and what are you most proud of?
Ooh, where do I start? Okay, well, when I first came in, the first thing I did was contribute something that was going to help residents get through the colder months, because I was appointed in August, and winter was right upon us. So we did the Winter Wheels Workshop. We gave out all 150 winter preparedness kits to District Two residents within three hours. That was the first thing I did for the community. Next, I moved on to focus on the children, and we did a youth Black History Forum, where we did a progressive timeline of Black history from prior enslavement in Africa to enslavement and to modern-day issues that we're currently dealing with. That was a partnership done with Oakland County Parks, the NAACP, Detroit Storytellers, and so on and so forth. However, what I'm most proud of, because I know I'm timed here, what I'm most proud of is what we've done with the RX Kids program and bringing that into Pontiac, because that has really helped so many. We're almost at $1 million spent in that program, because we are helping Pontiac mothers, Pontiac families, who are struggling with the new additions in their families and are struggling financially like the rest of us. That is what I'm most proud of, because, you know, our city was one of the only two at that time. Now there's more, but we were one of the originals to get that in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
So I have done advocacy work for voter registration. I've done, been in, done the home repair program to in-service seniors on not to be taken advantage of when contractors come to do work. I have done the builders with Ascend Foundation, where we go out and we interview the children for exit programs for schooling. I have provided an opportunity for young entrepreneurs, whether they're a barber shop, cooking, a place where they have a safe place to be sustainable and grow their business and take care of their families. I have been doing advocacy work within the community. And I've got some, we feed during the days, uh-oh.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kraft?
What haven't I done in this community? I was nervous a minute ago, but I'm good, I can talk about this. I started working with the youth when I was 15 years old. I started off as a coach for Powell, and I coached kids that was three years younger than me. I gradually went through every step, through the recreation departments, through Pontiac as a player, as a coach, as an official, and as a coordinator, as a youth sports coordinator. Right now, I currently have a 501(c)(3), which is called Crafty Athletics Foundation. And what I do, each summer, I have about 70 to 80 kids on a six-week sports and enrichment program, where they have food components, where they have food, where they eat every two meals a day. I run, I had the softball summer at the Mill Dam this summer, that softball league. I organize, put it together, like a 30 and over basketball league that's going on Golf Drive.
Thanks.
Come on, I'm just speaking to the mic. Okay. What I have done, what I am doing for the city, twice a week, I'm over at Salvation Army, which is the, what we know as the Island Center. I distribute food. I'm also working with Mr. Coman delivering food. I also dedicate at least 20 to 40 hours a week helping Dr. Powell, formerly she was Dr., Ms. Hopkins from the Bay of Carse. What else I do in the community? I go and sit with the seniors of my neighborhood and make sure that they have the necessities, things that they need to carry on, because we know when people get of age, they don't have the family, you know? So I do that. I'm a mother. And other things I do in the community, me and my children, we feed the homeless. If I can-
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, so what I find is that people have the capacity to serve in different ways. Doesn't have to look the same. As the executive director for the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus, I coordinated the support necessary in order to help bring, eliminate school debt, which directly impacted Pontiac, as well as the money for the MLK Bridge. That doesn't happen without coordinating the effort from the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus. As a planning commissioner, before it even got to council, we approved of a moratorium for dollar stores in our community, which plagued us for many, many years. We made sure that we approved for Oakland County to continue to do their work so that they can act as an anchor prior to it coming to city council. I am the director of policy and creator of programs for honor community health. One of the things that we do and we know is that we have a health crisis here in the city of Pontiac. Every day, I create programs to help us as a community be a healthier community, because it leads to a healthy economy ultimately. So those are the things that I'm currently doing and have done for Pontiac, and I look forward to continuing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
You can ask the question. What I've done?
Yeah, and what are you most proud of?
All right. Over $300 million, I put in economic development project. The healthiest city financed budget in 30 years, currently over $60 million of fund balance, balanced the city budget, doubled the bond rate in the city. It was a junk bond for 15 years, it's a triple A right now. You're welcome. Property value has increased. Look at your house, see how much it has increased. We have a program, I have, excuse me, brought community block in-house, so that we can do community projects. We've doubled the size of Murphy Park, $60 million in new state funding for all roads and continuing construction. We paved the road on Columbia, Branch, Franklin, Golf Drive, more underway. Master plan has actually been done and started and finished. We brought Oakland County back to the city of Pontiac with almost 800 jobs. Estimated $5 million in Phoenix Center debt off of your taxpayers' back. I did that. Started the new recreation program, just did the thing today. Rebuilt the code enforcement, because we didn't have one, it was outsourced. And established the rental escrow program. What I'm most proud of is my coat drive. Every year, we gave out 12 undercoats, and I'm proud of that, and I will continue to do the work, because it's supposed to be about getting it done for the people. That's what I've done.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua?
So a little anecdote story, but when we first moved into our subdivision, my wonderful wife Melissa and I noticed that there was trees covering a lot of the stop signs, because, you know, the city, just as you know, hasn't been taking care of the trees as they should. So we got out there with our loppers and bags of yard waste bags, and cleaned up all the stop signs in the area. That was just the start of it. And then since coming here, obviously, I volunteered for the ZBA, the Housing Commission. But in my district, I'm on the Main Street Huron. We've already received multiple grants and provided those to businesses along the Main Street or the Huron Corridor. And there's a group in the area you're probably very familiar with, nonprofit Make-A-Six. I attend almost every one of their recent spring cleanup, block cleanup, and bring all my lawn equipment in my car, and I edge sidewalks and work in people's yards.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Ms. Campbell. And the question is, how do you plan to address community safety issues such as the abandoned Washington Junior High and the excessive speeding on Huron Street?
How do I plan to address the abandoned school, you said?
Well, community safety issues, and those were just- Well, community safety issues, and those were just two examples.
Oh, community safety issues. So, for the community safety issues, each landlord or person that owns the vacant buildings, they have a responsibility to make sure that those buildings are boarded and that they're safe. If they're not, then there needs to be, I do believe we have an ordinance, but it's not strong enough to where the landlord or the, the owners fill it. So, there needs to be a stronger ordinance, so when they're not safe, that they are penalized. Uh, as far as safety, we will, I would love to collaborate with the, um, people to be in the community, to build a stronger and safer community by just collaborating and working with the organizations that are boots on the ground and, um, to increase safety.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft? Read the question? Yeah. How do you plan to address community safety issues such as abandoned Washington Junior High and the excessive speeding on Huron Street?
I think one of our main community, uh, safety issues is our youth. And I think, um, the young teenage adults, I mean, from, uh, I guess you say 13 to 20 years old, I think, no, 13 to 18, because what we have to do, we have to start putting, uh, mandates on the parents and hold them accountable for some of the, um, actions of our youth. And I think that, you know, for one of the incidents that just happened over the summer over at the McDonald's where it was a big brawl or however it is, parents should be held accountable for those type of things for their children. The children are out at crazy times of the night, and, uh, we need to, to, to hold on to our babies and stuff, and we need to hold these parents accountable, because they're, they're letting the kids do what they want to do. I think that's a big safety concern right here.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Howard, please pass the mic. Ms. Kraft?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, for safety in the community. In my community, the biggest safety we have is the long-fell ability. And that's Esther and Esther, oh, we're in the Esther area, Esther Street area. And it's been numerous of times that these people have been contacted and ticketed or whatnot, and there's still nothing going on there. So, me, I would personally want them to be locked out of their home facility if they cannot fix it or create it to be a safe environment, because it's, it's in the middle of the neighborhood, and kids walk past there, their bus stops are in the neighborhood. So, that's what I vote for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, so certainly a stronger ordinance, um, will make the difference in terms of holding, um, landowners, others accountable for the space that they own, uh, whether they're here or not. But, good leaders understand that they can't do everything. They understand when it's time to invest in people that are doing the work. Uh, one of the things that came up recently is that there are a few organizations that, uh, there was a feeling that they weren't contributing or nothing was getting done. Identify Your Dream is one of them. And I'm here to say, the more we invest in the people that have been doing the work, the better off we'll be overall. And so partnerships, because I don't proclaim to be an expert in community safety, that's what we have people in certain jobs and positions for. I sit on the Sheriff's Relations Team so that we can have conversations with folks like Officer Thurgill and others that we meet on a quarterly basis to talk about what's going on in Pontiac and what we can do to make sure it's safe moving forward. And so, invest in the people that are already doing the work, that's how we make this community safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. How do you plan to address community safety issues? Examples were given as abandoned Washington Junior High and the excessive speeding on Huron Street.
So, I can't talk about Washington Junior High, but I could talk about Jefferson, and how we've done the work to make sure that we hold the landowners accountable. And I can't talk about the speed bumps on Huron, but I could talk about the speed bumps on Motor, because we already have them in place. And we have more speed bumps in District One than any other district. And I can't act like I'm an expert on crime, but what I did was, when there was a murder in my district recently, I called everybody to the table, and I said, we all have to be a part of this together. And that's why we started a citizen patrol. See, it's not just having the police involved, it's not just an organization of all, the people have to be invested in the community to keep it safe. We have to not be afraid to say, I see something, and call truth to power. At the end of the day, we, the citizens, can make our community better by having both public and private partnerships, by having a safety patrol, by having a neighborhood watch. At the end of the day, the people are going to set the tone for how we can lead better in District One, and as I always have done, the people have to be at the table.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Bavacqua?
Yeah, so, um, in regards to unsafe blighted properties, I've kind of already addressed my concerns over making sure that we have ordinance officers in place that are going to hold landlords and property owners accountable. I do think that, uh, I agree with Mr. Kraft, that, uh, youth engagement is, uh, something that we should be prioritizing more. Um, it, it sounds like in about 18 months, we should have, uh, that, uh, in conjunction with that, we will have some sort of, uh, mobility service that will allow us to get kids from their neighborhoods to that, uh, facility, um, so that, you know, we can keep folks, um, active and, uh, and doing positive things. As far as, uh, generally dealing with, with crime and safety, we just need to increase revenue. A lot of our issues in our community are, are resource issues. It's about being strategic, bringing in more investment into the community, and allocating those resources appropriately, so that we can, uh, increase, um, the, uh, the sheriff's presence and decrease crime.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Okay. When we talk about community safety issues, you know, one of the things we do is automatically go to the police. What I have done is taken a unique, unique approach to empowering residents to respond in the event of an emergency. That was done with the Lifesaver Lab, which I'm sure many of you would know about, free opportunity for residents to learn CPR training, active shooter response training, stop the bleed, et cetera. So, that was one way that I have empowered, uh, community safety issues and more like community preparedness. But I want to focus on the second part of that question, speeding on Huron. Um, we have that problem throughout the city, it's not just on Huron. What I'm more concerned with are pedestrian safety across Huron and across Telegraph, because although those crosswalks are in place, which I'm sure you've seen, many times when you're driving on a main road and there's sun, you know, beaming down, you don't see the reflectors telling you to stop, it's not a stop sign. So, what I plan to do is partner with Pontiac citizen James Miller, if you're watching, hello, who is interested in starting the POPS Initiative, protecting our pedestrian safety. You will hear more about that in the coming months.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Kraft. What will the city do when abuse of power happens from code officers or officials?
Power happens?
Yeah.
Between code officers and officials?
What will or can the city do when abuse of power happens from code officers or officials?
Um, I think we, we would have to, uh, implement rules and, and regulations for, for that as council. Um, and, um, I'm pretty much, I'm not pretty much, um, educated with that, with those, with that type of question, so I would like to pass on that question, because I feel uncomfortable with answering.
Ms. Howard?
Okay, with the, uh, excessive, correct, excessive, of excessive power?
Yeah, the question is, what will the city do or can do when abuse of power happens from code officers or officials?
Well, um, in fact, I'm, I'm a abuser of it, they abused me of it, um, stating that my home was a rental property, and I keep getting, I was getting tickets numerous of times for my property that, that I'm registered with, saying that it's privately, a private home. And, um, I had to go down to the city hall for it. And now, it's like in limbo, no one is telling me what's going on. All of a sudden, now, I don't have to pay the tickets, but what is the reason why? Okay, so, that's it, that's all I have.
Mr. Jackson?
One second, okay. So, it's, it's not to say that we don't listen to complaints and follow up with investigations on them, but we have to allow the mayor, who is the CEO of this city, to do their job. And technically, those folks report to the mayor. Now, I will say, I will take the lead of this council, because it's a culture thing. When we allow certain individuals to abuse power, what ends up happening is everybody else thinks that they can do the same. There have been elected officials even, that because they abused their power, have been stripped of their subcommittees for a majority of this year, right? They've been, um, limited, I believe, that they can do it too, and that's what we need to put into discipline in leadership, is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
Can you say the question one more time, please?
Sure. What will this, what will the city do or what can the city do when abuse of power happens from code officers or officials?
Well, I'm gonna speak to it, because I've had to deal with it. When I first got in the office, I was censored, because I said something that wasn't right. I've had people throw slanderous accusations against me, and it's been proven, and I found guilty, because at the end of the day, an accusation is simply that, an accusation. I can't run from my mistakes, but I also have to be held accountable when I do make mistakes. And that's one of the things I try to make sure everybody sees, that I'm human, and that we, even in office, even in power, you're gonna have moments where you literally make a mistake. I believe in second chances, I'll give you an example. We have a program called CEO. Most people don't, ain't never even heard of it. And CEO allows people that are just as impacted to come back into this community and actually have jobs to serve. So, what would happen if we just said they were not good enough, because they made a mistake, they can't serve? We would have nobody else serve. The Bible says, "Just yet, just not let ye be judged." At the end of the day, you can make a mistake and learn from it. I took anger management, because I needed to learn from it. I learned how to get better mentors, because I needed to learn from it. At the end of the day, everybody falls short from grace, and it's not my job to make sure they don't get in trouble, but it is my job to hold them accountable when they do, just like I hold myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua?
Uh, to piggyback off of what Mr. Jackson said, it's about equal treatment under the law. I mean, we, we have to have equal treatment under the law in this community. Everybody needs to be treated the same. We have to stop any sort of cronyism or nepotism, or, you know, taking care of our friends, and they get treated differently than others do, because it becomes a culture thing. And then, and then people look at that, and, and they start emulating it in, in the work that they're doing. And when it's being done by, by a city official, um, there should be zero tolerance, and, uh, and that's what I'd push for.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones?
I want to answer that by taking a few steps back. Uh, if there is a city official of any, of any type who is abusing their power, what we have to do first is stop to collaborate with the departments. And I say this from a city council perspective, outside of the code of ethics for our city council members, I'm referring to city staff, because, believe it or not, there have been reports where, um, individuals feel as if, uh, city staff is abusing their power. Collaboration with departments is the first step in addressing, uh, those types of concerns, but then comes action. And for protecting, um, residents from this type of experience, you know, there, there are things that city council has already implemented, such as, uh, the renter ordinances, where if a landlord is abusing, you know, their power, then we have that protection in place. For city council, we have a code of ethics in place to hold people accountable, um, to their actions. So, that, those are already in place, and what we have to do is be committed to enforcing that going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
So, I'm gonna answer that question in two folds. Number one, when power is abused, it messes up the credibility and the trust of the person that has abused their power. And when we talk about, when we say abusing power, there should also be a way of the person that's abused, that there should be a grievance process that's outside of the city council, or the, the people that's directly involved, that where it may be a conflict. So, let's say you've got a grievance, and then this, you put your grievance in, but the person you've got the grievance against is reading the grievance. We have to make sure that we separate and have a, a grievance process that is, um, safe, and people feel that something is going to be done. And as far as, um, when they do grieve, do some abuse, then they need to be censored, they need to follow the code of conduct, and it needs to be, I'm like Thor, the hammer needs to come down to say, this is that.
Okay. The next question, we will start with Ms. Howard. Many residents feel disconnected from city hall. How will you communicate with residents regularly and make sure their feedback actually shapes your votes on council? And Mr. Kraft, can you slide the, thank you.
Can you repeat it for me?
Sure, it's a long one. Many residents feel disconnected from city hall. How will you communicate with your residents regularly and make sure their feedback actually shapes your votes on the council?
Um, well, I feel that there's a disconnection, is because I live by the city hall, and we get no knowledge or no literature, mail to stating things that are happening within the city. I guess you have to be what's the loose who, or whatever, to know about these things. Um, and what was the second part? I'm sorry.
Um, just to make sure that their feedback is actually shaping your votes on council. Feedback, you're getting it.
Okay, and for me, if in the event that I do get in office, I will let my community know, because that's the thing of a city council member. You're supposed to know your community, be in your community, and, and let them know the things, the events, or anything that's going on that's going to help them.
Okay. Um, Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, so, a good example would be, the American Speed Festival was held at M1, uh, this past weekend. Now, this is an event that happens, or has happened annually, at least for the last two or three years. What I would have done as a council person is let the immediate neighborhood know that this event was getting ready to happen, because it's just common courtesy. Instead, we have individuals waking up, going on live, on the east side of Pontiac, saying, why do we hear this? What's going on over here? Why don't any of us know? I believe it should be the city, it should be the corporation that communicates with people, but it's also incumbent on the district representative to make sure that people in that neighborhood that are going to be impacted are communicated with. The other thing is, as far as communicating regularly, again, just being transparent and process. You're not gonna always agree with the decisions I make, and I understand that. However, I will give you an opportunity to at least give me input before I make a vote or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
So, oh, it's on. So, one of the things I've done in the last four years is we have a monthly meeting, letting everyone know what's coming on the pipeline. Unfortunately, when this recent event happened, we were not told from the administration that they actually approved this license, because we don't have the, we don't have the power to approve them to actually have an event. We weren't given the information, so that was a slip-up, slip-up, and that, I apologize. At the end of the day, it has to be open dialogue between the administration and also the legislative branch. What I've also always continued to do is give an annual report about what has happened in the district, what we spend in the district. I turn in my, um, funds, uh, checks and balances account every month, showing them how much I'm actually spending on district projects. At the end of the day, I show what I do by being transparent and real, and always admitting if I've made a mistake, and taking ownership when I've made a mistake. You are human, you will get it wrong, but the way we get it right is by open, open and honest conversation, and about being transparent, even when it makes everyone or sometimes people uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua?
Yeah, I think, uh, you always have to listen to the constituents, but you also have to be very careful that you don't, um, get hung up with getting overly engaged with a vocal minority that doesn't represent the community. So, for example, I've been knocking on doors for my campaign, 1,500 doors, and I ask everybody that I get a chance to talk to, you know, what are your concerns? What are you worried about? What would you like to see? If it's not on my platform, I'd be interested in putting it on my platform, you know, let me know what your thoughts are. And for the most part, people are, people are pretty fine with things. They're like, hey, I like my neighborhood, things are going pretty well, of course, I'd like the roads to be better, whatever it is. There's always gonna have some sort of pet project or initiative. You have to be careful about legislating over a pet project. Um, I always listen, but, um, it's gotta be taken into context. This is a large community, and a few people shouldn't be dictating the legislation.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
To address this concern, one of the first things I did was launch a District Two council-led meeting called District Two's Collaborate and Elevate. There had been a longstanding community advisory meeting, and it still does go on, uh, Mondays at 7:00 PM. However, many people in the district, as I got to know my constituents more, were struggling with that meeting time for different reasons. with that meeting time for different reasons, whether it was lack of accessibility to childcare on a Monday night or a lack of transportation or work obligations. So what I did was launch a, a consistent weekend meeting that offers a Zoom accessibility for those who are still struggling with, uh, getting to the location. And what that did was opened me up to new perspectives and those that, you know, were not able to come to the Monday meeting were able to tune in on Zoom, uh, leave their input or, um, come to that meeting. And some individuals go to both meetings, which was, you know, even more wonderful because then you're able to work with others and share the information that you've heard. So what, so that is one thing that I did to address that and, um, I'm running out of time here, but, uh, for consistent communication, uh, mailing would be great, but reality is mailing is expensive. So we're going to have to work on breaking down barriers to getting the communication.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Campbell?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Make sure I'm doing the right one. Many residents feel disconnected from City Hall. How will you communicate with residents regularly and make sure their feedback actually shapes your votes on council?
I want to say, um, to, to, for the residents to feel connected, there has to be, um, the, the committees or community meetings. There's, there's quarterly, weekly, monthly meetings that each district has and we have a lot of participants that are able to go to the district meetings and be informed. However, we have some that are not able to attend and that's when, uh, some alternative methods is meeting them at their place, uh, if there's a multiple of them. The alternative is sending out email blasts, text messaging. Uh, I think it's very important that the community has to be involved at the subcommittees at the, uh, that the city of Pontiac has. I learn a lot from the subcommittees and then I take it out to the districts that I'm in. Uh, we do have Unity Hour with Regina that people come out, they learn about what's going on in the district and that keeps the door open for them to be safe, feel safe.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Yes, I would also say that, um, community meetings, I think that's, that's important when you have the connection, but you only have a small portion of people that show up to those meetings. But I think it'd be, um, if we, if we also implemented some type of Facebook page because a lot of people is on self, social media, a district's Facebook page and then therefore they can go on the inbox and you'll tell you if they have problems and you immediately get those, um, get those complaints and concerns from there and then you can possibly answer those right there with the inbox. So that might be another way of doing, um, because with, uh, with the platform that we have right now with the city council, I think it's kind of difficult. Back in the early, uh, 2000s, we were able to watch a lot of the city council meetings. It was there from Comcast, but now it's, it's challenging at this point now with the platforms that they have now. Everybody don't stream on, uh, on, on, on social media or anything.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Jackson. Yeah, she started. How do you plan to address the rise of violence in the community? How do you plan to address the violence directed specifically toward women?
So violence in our community, first of all, again, I'm no expert. And so we need to engage in the groups and law enforcement that are willing to be proactive in this process instead of reactive. Now, law enforcement, if they're responding, it's because the thing has already happened. So they're being reactive. The goal is to be more proactive in our approach. There are organizations that deal in mental health. There are organizations that deal in the loss of loved ones for young children. There are organizations that do gun buybacks. All of these organizations already exist. We just don't give them the resources to be able to do the things that they need to do. And so how do we address violence? Well, first of all, it's on us. We have to take accountability as a community as well. So we have to make sure our children, our babies are in safe spaces, safe places, have options because that's the difference between what happens to a young person and what doesn't. But for one, I don't want my son to inherit a Pontiac that we have now. And the way that we do that is by being more proactive opposed to reactive.
Thank you very much. Your time's up. Thanks. Ms. Rutherford?
First of all, we have to let someone know when they're in a domestic violence situation that it's not acceptable and it's not okay. And we offer them the resources like telling them about the Haven, telling them about the shelter, telling them about the lighthouse. We talk about CNS that does city service wraparound services. And we also let them know that it's okay to say if I have a mental health issue. I suffer from PTSD. It's something that I used to hide from people because I would be triggered when people would bring up my past about being sexually assaulted, et cetera. But once I learned that it's power when you tell people your story, it gives them the equipment and the tools they need to use so that they can get the help they need. Just having the police involved is not enough. We have to start showing them about wraparound emergency services. We have to start giving them the number 988 when they have suicidal thoughts because there's so many right, right now, people are suffering from depression, they're suffering from anxiety, they don't know where to turn. We can cool down the violence by offering-
Thank you. I just got a quick message for all the candidates is make sure you're keeping your mouth pretty close to the mic so that everybody in the room can hear. Thanks. Mr. Bavacqua?
Yeah, one of the things we can do as leaders in the community is obviously model, uh, conflict resolution and, and, uh, you know, always try to, uh, de-escalate even in the, um, conversations that we have amongst ourselves and the debates. Model the behavior that, that we want to see in others, um, but specifically to, uh, you know, to try to tamp down any, uh, violence against women. I agree with what everyone else is saying. Obviously, we have nonprofit organizations. We have to make sure that they're, uh, working in a symbiotic way with our neighborhood policing department, um, so that those services can get, uh, deployed as quickly as possible when, uh, when we understand that those situations arise.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Okay, there's two parts to this question, but we're going to start with protecting women. Um, if, if you can relate to this topic, there is no mediation strategy that's going to work when you have an abuser in your face hurting you. What we need to do is empower women specifically, um, in the, in the case of domestic violence, we need to empower them through continued self-defense classes, through continued resources for mental health services, through partnerships, introducing them to potential partnerships like, like Haven and like these House of Angels. We have resources here in our city, businesses and nonprofits that are committed to helping individuals of all, um, backgrounds when they are in crisis situations. For the community in general though, um, what I did, um, more recently was invite our Pontiac group, Violence Intervention Group to the District Two meeting. They gave an update on their platform and what they're currently doing right now and I discovered that we have a gap for ages eight, three, 18 through 25. We need to empower that specific age group to continue addressing violence in our community based on the research from our GBI team. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
I believe that, um, for us to, uh, work on the violence, uh, we need to have our community policing partnerships, which we do have. Uh, I believe that, uh, there's a lot of mental illness that's in our community. Just to give an example, I had a young guy walking across my parking lot. He just karate kicked a trash can and he was mentally ill though. There was another gentleman in the parking lot felt that he was going to go and discipline him, which was the wrong thing to do. So when we talk about mental illness, uh, and, and our community about being safe, we have to know that vi- violence on top of violence is not the solution. We have to have our kids that get familiar with our police officers in the community as a friendly person, not as someone that's always patrolling the community and, and let them feel safe that policing is there for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Can you re-
Sure. How do you plan to address the rise of violence in the community and how do you plan to address the violence directly specifically toward women?
First of all, we need to support all the, the groups, the anti-violence groups this year, put more focus into them, encourage other, others to get involved in starting groups and organizations and, um, really look at demographics of just who, who is committing these crimes and focusing that area. In far as with, with the women, that's the same thing with the Haven and all of those wraparound services that's, that, that helps the domestic violence, uh, uh, abuse victims. And, um, we need to focus in on helping them more and create a stronger partnership with Oakland County share and make sure that they're, uh, doing their job as outlined in their contracts.
Thank you. Pass the mic. And Ms. Howard?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How do you plan to address the rise of violence in the community? How do you plan to address violence directed specifically toward women?
Okay, how would I, uh, okay, for the domestic violence? Me personally, you know, the little cards that be, be left alone in the bathroom, but also when these people call these hotlines, I have someone there that can give these women resources as in like getting out or other necessities that they need to be able to get away from their abuser. And as far as the community in the neighborhood, I hold parents accountable. I hold the person accountable because you know if your child is not acting accordingly or there's some issues going on within your home, you need to get them help. Seek help. Mental health is a big issue in, in our community. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And next question, we'll start with, um, Ms. Rutherford. How are you planning to take advantage of the city's new bond rating?
Bring in more housing, often more services, bring in more business, create more jobs because when you have a good bond, it increases the value of the city. Imagine being under a place for 15 years where our bond was CCC and in less than four years, our bond is double A, the highest it's ever been in the history of Pontiac. This is the opportunity for us as a citizens and as a community to seize the moment. So I say build new properties. I say have new businesses. I say create new lanes or avenue, avenue for wealth. This is our moment. This is our time and I'm proud that we were able to do this in four years for the double A brown rating. And that's how we can improve and that's how we can empower. One moment, one movement, one person at a time.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua?
Yeah, obviously having a good credit rating is a, is a wonderful thing. I think that we should, uh, we should leverage it to, to try to allocate resources so that we can, um, bring in new investment into the community. So you, you take the, you take the, the credit that you have and you apply that resource to generating more revenue and build on that. I mean, that, that's, that's smart business sense. That's how, you know, that's how the people that are most successful in business in this, in this country, that's how they do it. They use their, uh, their credit to, to, to build their wealth and that's what we need to do as a community.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Our decisions have to be based on community needs, first of all. So the first thing that we as a council are going to do is use some bonds to pay for the new youth rec center. That has already been, um, you know, expressed and that is already a plan. And thank goodness for the double A bond rating too, because we have, um, a wonderful chance of not only receiving that bond and throwing forward with that project, but others in the future. Where we need to be careful is getting in over our head, going for way too many projects, taking out too many bonds. That will put us right back where we were as a city. So what I plan to do to, uh, take advantage of the bond rating is to base what we take bonds off of, off of community need. Right now, that is the youth rec center. That is it. But based on community need, the next thing we would look at would be housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
With the, with the, the great bond rating, I believe that as the city, uh, do their capital improvements, that, that bond rating that's good for the city should be good for all. So as they do their capital improvements and they have developments that coming in and contractors and people that are working on these projects, that they also include the community. Make sure there's a community business ordinance that goes along with that to create workforce development, create stability for working families and to advance, uh, in those areas as well. And, uh, that's what I believe should have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kraft?
Yes, with, um, the bond rating, I think that we should, um, invest in, in, uh, in something that would basically bring back revenue back to the city and housing is one of them. Housing is one of them and maybe use it and not, like I said, go over our head and, uh, to where we can go back into the rut where it, make sure that we, and, um, that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. Pass the mic. Ms. Howard?
Okay, on the bond rating, I believe that, well, I know that we have so many of our own contractors or what, whatever business that the city is seeking outside other cities. Y'all saying longevity? Let these people be aware so they, they can make, um, get involved in a process to get in these bids. Because if we're going outside of the city, wouldn't that be awesome for us to get the city of these people to have their own businesses that live in the city? Wouldn't that bring back our city? Instead of going seeking outside entities? Let us get our city back. Get our, our own workers that live, our neighbors that, to come in and help us out instead of going outside of the city. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, definitely thank God for good credit for the city. Uh, first thing is our local roads. It's going to require a bond or milice to get that done anyway, and I think that's a high priority for most people in our district. And so what I propose is there's this thing called a PASTER report, P-A-S-E-R. The city already has one. It identifies where roads are in terms of ranking from one to four, all the way up to 10. What we can do is take 10 roads per district, ask for a bond, do 10 roads per district, get that done and then go back and do it all over again once we prove that we already got that accomplished. So that's the first thing we do, bond toward the roads. And by the way, for the other roads, the major roads, it's important that we put out there that the, the county put 80% of that money aside for those roads to be finished. You just needed to be in the seat, raise your hand, say yes, we'll take it and hopefully we got a good relationship with the county moving forward. So those major roads, by the way, across the city are all the money from Oakland County. Thank you.
And the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Bavacqua. What's one measurable outcome you want to achieve for your district by the end of your term if elected? How will the residents know you've done it?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, it'd, it'd be about removing blight, um, and making our, our neighborhoods, uh, safer, brighter, better, more vibrant. Um, I, I want to focus on, uh, arteries like Main Street here on. I think a partnership with that nonprofit organization and effort from the city, um, to, to just try to make that corridor, um, reach its potential. I think if we start focusing on areas that are, uh, of high focus to people who travel through the city, um, providing services and businesses, uh, that are, that are vibrant for the, for the people here in the community will only help us, um, you know, build success in, in other areas. So, so by the end of my term, I'd like to see that, uh, that Huron corridor, uh, looking pretty good and, uh, people benefiting from it.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
One measurable outcome I would love to achieve is renovating and repairing streetlights throughout District Two. That includes the new portion of District Two, which also is in dire need of some, uh, streetlight renovations. We have areas, oh, and in the existing part of District Two as well. That, I mean, it, it's part of my public safety initiative. It will be, you know, easily seen by residents as they're driving through and they can see where they're going, uh, but this has to be taken care of. Uh, we, we do have aging infrastructure in our city because we are in an older historic city, but we really do need to continue moving the needle on streetlight repairs, grants for not only replacing the bulbs, but actually getting down to the infrastructure underground and fixing, uh, the problems that continuously cause our streetlights to go out on corridors such as Orchard Lake, Caesar Chavez, Johnson and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
I would love to see, um, the new District Six, more housing. We've got a lot of vacant lots, uh, more affordable, uh, housing, market rate housing. I would love to see, um, a lot of home repair too. We've got a lot of, uh, I was door knocking, we've got a lot of homes that are-
We've got a lot of, I was door knocking, we've got a lot of homes that are in need of repair. A lot of our agent-in-place residents need help. So that would be something that I will fight for, for home repair and more housing. And also literacy. We house a lot of the students in the new District 6. And as many of you know that, we have a literacy problem, not just in Pontiac, but across the board. And so I would love to see those numbers go up by putting some hubs in place in the new District 6 with literacy programs.
Thank you. Mr. Kref.
I would like to make Auburn vibrant again. Auburn Road used to be vibrant when I was growing up. I mean, you had bars, you had eateries and places like that. I would like to rebuild that up again because of the potential it has there, the potential it has on Auburn Road. And another thing, I want to go off right quick with the community centers. I think that it should have been one in three different spots here, even though we're gonna have this amazing community center here. But I think there's a need for something over there for the activities for the children in that area, that area and also the south side. Because they're gonna miss out on this when you have a community center that's in the north side. On the north, the kids on field do, and places like that are not gonna have these kind of activities for them at their disposal. And we can't really rely on secondary transportation through other partnerships.
Pass the mic. Mr. Kref. Pass the mic. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What's one measurable outcome you want to achieve for your district by the end of your term if elected? How will the residents know you've done it?
Bringing us back as a unit. Enjoying our community. Learning the people in our community. And how would the people know that I've done it? I'm doing my footwork now. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so the first thing is executing on that plan that I just offered and getting streets like Earl Moore, the local roads, taken care of as soon as possible. Through that bond process, again, I provided a plan for that. The other thing is, on the planning commission, we, in that master plan, identified corridors throughout the city that we'd like to see redeveloped. Franklin School was one of those. And so in District 1, my goal would be to partner with Mr. Basha, who owns it currently, find a developer, and then basically start the process. Because it may take a little more than four years, right? But at least begin that process toward mixed-use housing, retail in that area for Franklin specifically and redevelop those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford.
One of the first things, I was told y'all can't hear me, so I'm gonna talk louder, is doing Earl Moore Street in the first 90 days. I think that's an attainable thing that we can do. The second thing is starting and finishing the 100-home program. The third thing is making sure that we offer senior services year-round, not just when we have funding, but we can do it if we bring it in-house. The fourth thing is making sure that the home repair that everybody that was approved of is done by January 2027. I'm tired of people saying they haven't got their number, their number 92. And we have 228 people on their list. And 114 of them are in District 1, but making sure they have their home repairs done. A promise is made and a promise is kept. Last but certainly not least, bringing in second chance programs for people that are returning citizens. We have a large amount of people that are coming out of the system and they need ready-made resources. They don't need just sound bites. They need things to help them have the skills to empower, to improve. I know this because I have two sisters that were in the system that just came home. And they're struggling because they can't find a place to live. But if we have wraparound services for the people that live in our district, we can all win at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we will begin with Ms. Jones. How do you feel about revenue from a marijuana dispensary would impact our community?
Well, the revenue is gonna be great. I mean, you know, money coming into our city is money that we can then recycle to our neighborhoods. At least that would be my passion and that would be my priority. And, you know, that goes for all-around neighborhood investment, from removing blight to improving aesthetics, potentially launching another home repair program around. We open the opportunities wider when we have extra revenue source and a larger tax base. And the problem that we do need to be cautious of is, you know, similar problem with what we're experiencing to find like similar priorities, similar interests, and, you know, figure out how we can make these things work for everyone, especially as we get new developments into our city.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell.
I agree with Ms. Jones that revenue is great. But I also want to say the flip side of the revenue, what comes along with that dispensary in certain areas. And so we always need revenue to invest and to build our programs and to help the economy move, right? But we also have to be mindful of what comes along with that. I'm not saying I'm against dispensary investments. What I am saying is that there needs to be a balance when those dispensaries come.
Thank you. Mr. Kref.
I think the dispensaries are great. Like I said before, most of the cities in Oakland County is capitalizing off of it right now. And with our residents actually going out there purchasing. And I think that we can use that money to help subsidize our programs. The youth rec center is the elephant in the room that they're not talking about on the operational costs. We're talking about the bond to build it, but we're not talking about what's gonna happen after it's built and stuff. So we need to subsidize those type of programs, wraparound services need to come back here. I think it's great.
Thank you. Ms. Howard.
I think it's awesome. And with the 24, what is it, 24 something percent that is going up, I think that is great because it's bringing more money to the state. Why not? It's not, I mean, when they get the dispensaries or the business, they know the ins and outs of it. And it's a great thing for the kids to use the drugs, recreational, and for them to be able to get it from there than getting it off the street with the fentanyl in it. Yesterday, believe it or not, at my daughter's school, three kids overdosed on edibles. Yes, in our own community, these are things that we are not aware of because they don't want to say these things. But yes. But my thing is that what's glitter ain't always gold. I just come to you guys as a regular human being. I'm not gonna sit here and lie with all the numbers and stuff.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so the first thing I'll say about cannabis coming to Pontiac is, yes, the revenue will be good, but let's temper expectations. That 24% that was just talked about is a tax on cannabis companies, not in favor for those companies. So let's temper expectations, A, on how much money they're actually gonna be able to give to our community, first and foremost. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't hold them accountable for the things that they've already committed to in the application process that they put forward, right? So for me, it's, there's 16 or so of these that are gonna be approved by the planning commission per what was voted on by the people. So we can't do anything about those dispensaries or provisioned centers being here. But I suspect because of the economy here in Michigan, that that'll likely end up being four or five of them that actually end up maintaining and existing here in the city. And so let's temper expectations. Let's not count all of our eggs in that basket because we aren't gonna be able to get that money that we suspect we would have gotten four and a half years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford.
So as of 2024, the cannabis industry of Michigan generated $3.29 billion in combined adult use of medical marijuana. $333 million of that was actually gone in tax revenue that actually went to the cities. But we missed the boat. And it's not anybody's fault, but the process was too long. So now we have to look at what we have. Right now, my district is really up in arms because they don't want the one on Woodward. And that's an exception that the planning commission can say, we don't want that because the citizens don't want it there. We have to start listening to what people say at the end of the day. Do I think everybody should have a right to smoke weed? Yes, you should. Do I think that everybody has a right to use it as a medicinal when you have mental or emotional issues? Yes, you should. I'm pre-menopausal. Most women are using that to actually subsidize what they're going through in their mental health state. But at the end of the day, we have to be realistic about how much we're actually gonna get and what we couldn't got, what we couldn't got, what we could've got, excuse me. We have to still always tell the truth. It's not gonna be 300 million. It's not gonna be 200 million. We'll be lucky if we get a million a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bifakwa.
Yeah, very lucky if we get a million a year. I wouldn't expect anywhere near that. I would just say that Mr. Jackson said word for word what I was gonna say, so you've already heard it.
Okay. Then the next question, we're gonna be starting with Ms. Campbell. How do you plan to support and sustain resources that are currently experiencing funding reductions?
How do I plan to support?
And sustain resources that are currently experiencing funding reductions? I believe it's referring to from the state budget.
I believe that as we, it's gonna have to come from somewhere. And I believe that as these companies come in and want to invest, there has to be some community benefit ordinance, some investment that goes into a home repair program, some investment that goes into the school after kid projects, some investment that goes into the literacy program. We have to find a way to subsidize it. And when we do get our community benefit ordinance, there's things that they're working on now that will provide funding for these programs that are being cut through the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kref.
Can you repeat it again?
Yeah. How do you plan to support and sustain resources that are currently experiencing funding reductions?
Well, the big word that may come out is maybe millage in a way or some way to get some philanthropic help from different sources, partnering with major organizations this year, companies like the UWMs and M1, or however, to help come subsidize our programs and stuff. That's basically it.
Thank you. Pass the mic. Thank you. And Ms. Howard.
Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. How do you plan to support and sustain resources that are currently experiencing funding reductions?
First, I will educate. Educate the people in my community or the people that are needing these resources. Follow up and show them and be encouraging to them about these resources where they can have a longevity, but not stay on a certain program. And what was that, the phrase I was saying?
Just how are you gonna support and sustain resources that are currently experiencing the...
That was it.
Okay. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so it really depends on what resources you're referring to, because the state did just pass its budget. Federally, the thing that we have to worry about is Medicaid, Medicare for people who need those healthcare services. And so at Honor Community Health, for instance, it's just a matter of knowing what resources you have access to as a community. So we have to be better at communicating to the community what they have access to. At Honor Community Health, it's for underinsured or no insured individuals to get healthcare. That's mental and physical health. Gary Bernstein Clinic exists for people who don't have insurance. And so it's a matter of making sure we communicate to the people of the community what resources they actually have access to. And so when you say something about, when you mention sustaining, it's a matter of just understanding that there are replacements that already exist. People just need to be more aware of what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford.
So my job outside of council is I'm an outreach and enrollment specialist. Basically, what I do is offer ready-made resources. And so what we have to start doing is telling people where things are at a timely manner. How many, for example, how many of you guys know that there are more food banks that's been closed in the last 90 days than it has been in the last three years? Forgotten harvest has lost funding. So how do people get food when they can't? We find out which churches have their food banks ready available. The other way is having a community partnership, both public and privately, with Senator Jeremy Moss and Congresswoman Halle Stevens, and going to them and asking them to give us more funding, which they can do in their annual budget every year. But most importantly, is making sure people have the resources ready and made and available. We need to know if we can't pay our rent, we can go to CCRT. And as I work at the FQAC, no one can be turned away from those ready-made resources by State Rep Brenda Carter and say, what are you allocating for Pontiac? We did it before, we'll do it again. But the reality is that recession is coming and we need to prepare everybody so they can all be at the table.
Thank you. Mr. Bifakwa.
Yeah, the question is a little vague. I mean, the way I approach issues is you dig into the specific details of, you know, what the problem is, what the catch points are. You know, if we want to talk about what specific program has lost funding and how are we gonna deal with that, there's not really a catch-all for generally how we're gonna deal with, you know, issues of defunding. As everybody said, take a look at the types of programs that we're losing, try to find resources and reallocate them.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Right now, more than ever, we are called to lean on each other. And this is because of the uncertainties that still face our communities regardless of whether the state budget has passed or not. To sustain these resources that could still be taken away from us or to support resources for our community members, we're gonna have to look at partnerships, partnerships that maybe we haven't explored before. Perhaps it will be a partnership with another city. Who knows? We're gonna have to look outside of the box because one thing I do not want to be a priority is any move that will raise taxes on our residents. Because we are facing times of uncertainty. And to gouge residents who are living here in Pontiac is not gonna be how we make up for the resources that we lose. We're gonna have to look at partnerships and, as I said, potentially entities that we have not yet done business with.
Thank you. And this next question will go to Mr. Kref. And this will be the last question before we do closing statements. What are your plans to support businesses within your district?
To support businesses in my district, I would like to actually make sure that they have a great connection with Oakland County Sheriff so that their businesses can be safe. Make sure that there's no dumping at businesses. And I would like to also just be there, be there, be as an opening or as a listening ear for any concerns that they might have. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Question?
Sure. What are your plans to support businesses within your district?
What are my plans? I support all businesses that are in my district. My plan is to keep them there because they're bringing a lot of people around for things, whatever things that they sell as different businesses. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so one of the first things I would do is work, was the mayor's responsibility, but advocate for streamlining the process for when businesses come to town. The thing that I hear the most is that it's the most difficult thing for a business to get started, get the permits that they need, understand who they need to talk to. I was talking to a business owner the other day that said, I'm constantly getting the runaround at the mayor's office. This isn't a knock on the administration. We just need to do better because customer service is what matters for our businesses. The other thing is providing wraparound services, particularly for the small businesses. For instance, if we partner with Clark Hill and/or they are our vendor for legal services in our city, there is no reason why they shouldn't say, well, let me give X amount of free hours to small businesses, understanding that the ticket for legal cost or IT or marketing or, fill in the blank, all of those things are resources that we should be able to partner with people who make money from the city to take care of our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford.
So one of the ways I'm already doing that is I'm on the Main Street Pontiac. We offer ready-made resources for businesses that are downtown because that's where a large amount of my businesses are. But it gets a little deeper. We have to start advocating and telling people about the resource called Oakland Thrive. Oakland Thrive is located downtown where they offer resources, planning, learning how to balance your budget, learning how to understand what a business takes to be successful. The other thing that we have to do is start holding people accountable in the seats that they are in, in the departments. If it's taking 95 days to get a permit and costing business owners almost 100... If it's taking 95 days to get a permit and costing business owners almost $100,000, that's not acceptable. We have to start telling the administration, look, this is not working. And when code enforcement isn't doing their job, we have to hold them accountable too. If you want businesses to stay here, you have to be a welcoming community. And in some moments, we haven't done the best we could. But I believe we can do better and we can continue to build on the momentum that we have so that all businesses feel like they have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua.
I feel like I'm doing a football draft pool and people keep picking my player before it gets to me.
That was cool.
So yeah, no, definitely, I think growth helps build business and we need to make a better growth environment in our community. That includes streamlining the permanent process. I'm hearing from folks that there's not a great reputation for Pontiac out there in terms of trying to advocate for businesses, getting, you know, getting them up and running quickly. It turns, it turns investment off. More investment means more money, means more people, means more support for the businesses that we do have here. And, and as I'd mentioned a couple of times, obviously, working with nonprofits like Main Street Pontiac with the downtown, Main Street Huron on the Huron Corridor, trying to get as many, you know, business support grants that we, as we can, is going to be a priority.
Thank you very much. Ms. Campbell?
Oh, thank you for the.
I'm sorry. Ms. Jones. Sorry. Is this one? Okay. So through, through the last year since I've been on council, my priority was to develop a close relationship with business owners. My goal by the end of my term, which will happen much before that, is to meet every business owner in District Two. And I've already begun supporting them, so I've written letters of recommendations for some businesses and entities to help them get grant funding so they can continue developing their, their space. Referrals, more visibility. I've assisted small and other businesses with becoming city vendors with the City of Pontiac and getting that paperwork started. It can be a long process, but supporting these businesses through that process is what's going to help to support them for more visibility, more traffic, and therefore more revenue. Also, you know, just basically acting between a, as a conduit between businesses and City Hall. I've helped business owners get the permits that they needed to get their signs going, new businesses that they were having trouble communicating with the city's planning division. These are things that, you know, take a simple step of communication, and that's how we really support our businesses. Thank you very much. Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Campbell, thank you. I believe that our businesses, small businesses, need to be a priority. I believe that the programs that the City of Pontiac has put in place, from the grant program to the, the program for technical support, the program, low interest rate loans for small businesses, I just think we just need to make businesses a priority, more of a priority. The community really is what supports the businesses, right? When we have businesses that open, if we don't have the community to come out to support them, to make, to help them be sustainable, then they close. If we don't have the, the revenue for them to come in and do the repairs or the upgrades, then they, they have challenges. So I just think that making the businesses a priority with some of the programs that they have come to the community, that, that is what will help our businesses to be sustainable.
Thank you. That concludes our time for questions. Candidates now have one minute to make their closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. So we'll begin with Ms. Howard.
Oh.
Take the mic.
Yeah. Okay. Can I stand up?
We ask that everybody stays seated so you can be heard. And can you move the mic closer to your mouth so we can hear you?
My name is Kalima Howard, and I'm a Thai citizen. My family, I was raised where I live, on the east side of Pontiac. And it's like, we, we, we basically need to go in a different direction. No, I don't know all the high-power, oh, well, all the education on everything that everyone else is speaking on, but I can tell you that we are tired of the, the seniors in the neighborhood are hurting. They're hurting, and there's no reason for that. And I'm, I'm here fighting for my community. And that's, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and lie and redirect questions and go in circles. No, the whole city needs to go in a whole total direction.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much. Mr. Craft?
If elected, I'm going to give my whole heart to this city, in which I've given for 62 years. My main focus are the children and quality programming, the seniors, and make sure we have affordable housing. Workforce development is a priority, but we're a long way from there right now because of the literacy rate in our city. I think that we should have a stronger collaboration with the school district instead of a MOU and create some type of funding and some kind of collaboration to re-educate our adults, our young adults out here and get them ready for the workforce. I know that I have previous experience on, a two-year experience where I'm just not getting comfortable to learn how to talk in front of the mic, but I have the heart and a passion for this city, and I will work.
I mentioned that to be a good candidate or championship role, you have to have commitment, resources, and the intelligence. The resources to be able to share so that you can help people grow. The intelligence to share and how and what to do. I'm standing on for stronger neighborhood and housing, education, safer communities, and community ordinance. We need a better workforce. We need our young adults to go through some apprenticeship programs. Until we get a benefit ordinance in place, we won't have it. It's in every other community. We have developers that come in, they develop, and then they're on their way. Thank you. Excuse me.
Ms. Jones?
Good evening again. My name is Melana Jones, and I'm currently your city councilperson for District Two. My priorities are rooted in beautification, public safety, civic and economic development. That combination is the base to keep Pontiac on the rise. My, what I provide in that base is leadership rooted in empathy, educational experience, faith, and a forward-thinking mindset. And it's everything that happens within our city going forward. And it's going to be that base that makes sure that we have open communication and that we have fair leadership who is prepared to deal with the diverse communities that we have throughout, not only the district, but throughout Pontiac. In District Two and citywide, we need streetlights enhanced. We have wizy brush areas in neighborhoods that need to be cleaned up. We have, we need public safety initiatives, a public integrity officer. We have a lot of work to do, but I do need your vote and your support to make this happen.
Thank you. Mr. Bavacqua.
So thanks again for having me here tonight. I do appreciate the opportunity for you to get to know me a little bit. And I do want to say that, you know, I'm doing this out of a true desire to, to serve you and your community. I know I bring a slightly different skill set to the table than, than what we currently have as an entrepreneur, as a business person, as someone who's served in a different community. You know, I hope that there's an open-mindedness to giving me the opportunity to show you as I can, to try to bring an effective and efficient government into place in Pontiac that's going to bring economic growth and development and revenue that can be reallocated to provide better city services, to make everybody's lives better. And, and I do that from a place of love, and I, and I hope that that comes across.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford?
All day I've been thinking of what I was going to say in this moment. Was I going to give you my facts and all the things that I've accomplished in four years? Was I going to talk about me ending up in the newspaper and how you should forgive that? Talk about me not being able to vote on certain things and it causing an issue? But for this moment, I want to. It's a debt I owe. I truly owe the City of Pontiac everything. If it wasn't for Trish, if it wasn't for Wartimore, if it wasn't for Emmett Elliott, if it wasn't for Richard C., if it wasn't for Alexandria Riley and everybody else I grew up with, I don't think I would be here today. If you are looking for perfection, I will never be your candidate. And I'm not going to sit here and say, I'm not going to make any mistakes. But I believe in good trouble and necessary trouble because sometimes you got to make some noise to get the job done, and that is what I've done. I'm not trying to be your councilperson. I am the councilperson. And if you have me, I'll continue to get the job done. God bless you all.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah. Say, folks, we don't have time for games when it comes to our city's business anymore. We need leadership that's disciplined now. We need leadership that's accountable now. We need leadership that's transparent now. This can't be our government looking to be entertainment for folks. Actually, here's my mission. I want you to come to the city council meetings. I don't want you to get your popcorn ready on Tuesdays. I know some of y'all do. I want you to come to the city council meetings. I want you to get the information. I want you to say your piece. And I do believe in First Amendment rights, by the way. And then I want you to go home and I want you to say that that meeting was boring because the only thing that we did at that meeting was take care of the city's business. This isn't performative. This isn't for entertainment. We got four years to get some real things accomplished to put us in position for the next 10 years, next 20 years, and I'm asking for your vote and your support to become your next city councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters and their partners would like to thank the audience, the staff at Bowen Senior Center, the candidates, and Effigy Media Arts Company for making this forum possible. Re-broadcast of this forum will be on the League of Women Voters Oakland Area website, the partners' websites, and YouTube. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of 16. This presentation is copyrighted 2025 by the League of Women Voters and can only be shown in its entirety. All rights are reserved. Remember, early voting starts October 25th, or you can vote at your precinct on November 4th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Now, for concluding comments, I think we're going to have Charles come up and talk about dates again? Nope, nope. Angela, Angela Yevanport from Voting Access for All and Charles Thomas from When You Vote, I Win.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine, and thank you to all the candidates, all the organizations. I also want to lift up everyone who made this possible. Again, League of Women Voters Oakland Area, Change Up Midnight Coalition, Choose for a Secular Democracy, Michigan League of Conservation Voters Education Fund, Michigan Roundtable for Just Communities, Oakland Forward, Voters Not Politicians, Voting Access for All Coalition, and When You Vote, I Win. And to the residents, to the candidates, thank you. Thank you to this community for caring enough to ask questions, to listen closely, and take part in this process. This right here is what community power looks like. Okay? So, but most importantly, we want to continue asking questions, listening, caring, okay? So forums like this are more than events. These are acts of community powers, opportunities to make informed decisions, hold leaders accountable, and push for the kind of justice and investment our neighborhoods deserve. So thank you, thank you to the candidates for caring, for being a part of this community. And as we move to the November 4th election, I encourage every single one of you not only to vote, but bring someone with you, okay? Talk to your neighbors, right? Check on elders. Make sure our communities stay informed, engaged, and ready to show up. There is a survey that I believe folks have. We would love you to fill this out. This lets us know. Another forum next week on the 15th that is Council at Large and May Oral. So let us know how this was this evening. And I'm going to ask Charles to come up with some extra, some key dates that folks need to know. I know Christine, dates, yeah. What we know early vote, right? Early voting is, is almost here. Let's let the folks know.
Let's talk. Good evening, everybody. I always come up after things have already been well said, but I, I just want to read something real quick, and it's very familiar language. Most of us know this. We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these are rights, life, liberty, pursuit, and potential happiness. But most don't know the words that come right after that. And it says that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. I say that to say that the power is not on this side of the table, it's on this side. It's on this side. And so I just want to applaud you all for coming out, all the questions that were asked, all the questions that came across on the, the live feed. Because as folks in the community, it's good to know that you have folks, other folks in the community that are interested in the outcomes of the community, enough to where that they would come out and be a part of, whether it's remotely or in the room, of forums like this. We're grateful for the candidates, but I would have to say I'm more grateful that you all come in and you take a part because they have no power unless you consent to them having it. So make sure you vote. Early voting has already started, I'm sorry, absentee voted has already started. Early voting starts October 25th. You can go, the early voting is at the Pontiac Library. It's for nine consecutive days, October, October 25th through November 2nd. And then you can go and cast your ballot on Election Day, November 4th, at your regular polling place. If you have an absentee ballot and some folks like to see their ballot go through the tabulator, you can tabulate your absentee ballot, run it through the machine just like you would on any other day. But take advantage of the opportunities that we voted so that access to the ballot is more accessible, and make sure that you go out and cast your ballot in ways that are in Pontiac's best interest. Thank you all again, and have a good evening.
And let me just say, you can vote if you have a felony. A lot of people do not know that, so let someone know. If you know anybody, you may not need to know this information, but somebody you know does. In Michigan, you can vote with a felony.
It is not my favorite thing. It's not, doesn't matter.